Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's a City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. It is Tuesday, August 7, 2018. It is 6:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please. Mayor Holland here. Councilmember Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Lyon.
Here.
Councilmember Shipley is excused. Now open up to public participation. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on items not on the agenda? You have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record and your three minutes will begin.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. In January 21, 2003, the City Council meetings stated that they realized there was a traffic problem in the area of Florida Park Drive. Today, 15 years later, we're at 8,000 cars per day, 500 trucks per day going and using Florida Park Drive. That's 3 million-plus cars per year in a residential area. In my opinion, this has happened by ignoring yearly traffic count reports on Florida Park Drive, just ignoring them, abandoning ITT's design of traffic interchange taking place at Palm Coast Parkway, Palm Harbor Parkway intersection, which are non-residential intersections, which is a non-residential intersection, ignoring proven traffic common methods used by other cities, ignoring the harm to children in Delaney especially by scientific reports from world health organizations. I thought I understood that the city was going to conduct a count on how many cars were being used on Florida Park Drive as a thoroughfare, but I haven't seen any other information on that. One way of doing it would be using tag scanners that the police have to scan tags as they get on the Palm Coast Park, I mean on Florida Park and as they get off. Just a thought there. Children don't have a say-so as where they live, so we have to protect them where they I know that I just have really one question about the budget. Does the budget have money allocated for professional traffic common study on Florida Park Drive? We've talked about it, so is that money allocated for such a study? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Evening. My name is Carl Johnson. I live at 22 Powder Lane, and the lead-in street to our area is 3 Powder Horn. And this residence has been an eyesore for the last couple of years. I have pictures I just took today. I've been in contact with code enforcement, and if you'd like to read the two issues that I brought up with the -- I know this house is supposed to be foreclosed, and it was supposed to be a meeting in the middle of July with your code, whatever it was, board to decide on what to do with this house. And it is just, I have pictures I took today. If any of you aren't aware of this, I would be glad to show you. See if I can get this thing organized. And in addition to the ambiance of that house being there, they have a pit bull. It's all chest and teeth. They have him in the front yard sometimes, and he comes out of the high grass that you'll see there when you're walking by. If he ever breaks that leash, somebody that's in the street is going to be severely hurt. But it is on a chain. It never reaches the road. But I'm just curious how soon or if this thing's in foreclosure or the people that are living in there are out. They're still there, of course. The trucks are in the driveway.
Thank you. I'll follow up with your answer following public comment. Thank you. Speaker.
Robin McDonald, Palm Coast. Code enforcement, what a joke. I started in September of 2017. I requested a meeting. No meeting. December of 2017, requested another meeting. All I got was code enforcement 101. July 28, I came to this meeting, and I requested a drive-around with city officials, and again, no response, even with Barbara Grossman sitting in the audience. I don't understand what the city is so afraid of. The city will actually see what's really going on, not only in the R section, but in the other sections of the city. Back in September, when I brought this up, Mr. Landen was highly offended by my comments. He was right. He should be offended. He should be offended. But I wouldn't be offended. I would be flipping mad that somebody's been coming here for 11 months and calling on a week to bi-weekly about issues in the R section that are not being addressed by code enforcement. I have no idea what they do and why they're so afraid, but that's probably why they don't want to have a drive-through. Well, just when you thought that it wasn't going to get any worse in the R section, somebody decides that they're going to rip up a street. I'm assuming it's a street, because there's a boatload of concrete now, and where do you think they dumped it? They dumped it on Royal Palm in the R section, and it's got to be 15 or 20 feet of big chunks of concrete. Okay, that was last week. This week, yesterday, they came by and they dumped a whole bunch of dirt next to the I don't know how many miles encompasses the city, but why do you got to dump this on one of the major roads going through the R section? I called numerous times about issues on Rick and Barker. Goes in one ear and right out the other. There's a house right now on Rick and Barker that has had wooden pallets out there for two weeks. No response. No response from code enforcement. So I want to know if we're going to have this meeting and when it's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, and it's Mike Cochiola, Palm Coast. And the subject is the budget. I know that I sat in the budget meeting last week, and we talked about water utilities, and we also talked about the future, future growth, and what it's going to cost to fund future growth. Now, having spent 20 years with the Department of Defense and having dealt with multi-multi-billion-dollar budgets, one thing I learned is that you don't fund the future with promises. You don't fund the future with debt. And I noticed on our budget that was talked about last week, there's a substantial part of the future will be funded with debt, and I want to advise the council to just be very careful with that kind of thing. It would seem to me that if we can't afford it, we ought not to be thinking about doing it. Growth for its own sake is simply not a policy or a strategy, and borrowing to fund the future is not a good budget strategy. No matter how important something is, no matter how desirable it seems to be, if you don't have the money to do it, you don't do it. And you don't lose any sleep over not doing it. You go through your priorities. Whatever falls out the bottom, you walk away. You don't think about it until the next budget cycle to see if you can fit it in. So my point being that we need to look at the future, but we ought to be able to afford the future without borrowing our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment. Okay, that'll close public comment. Mr. Carr, thank you always for your comments. As discussed several times, we'll be discussing Florida Park Drive through our strategic planning process. There will be updates publicly as we come to a decision and discussion point. As far as Powder Horn, that is a problem. I know it's a problem. It's a serious problem. Can you update us on where the progress is?
Yes, we're taking every legal step possible, and the applicant is correct. It appears probably our best choice is foreclosure, and we're working with the bank, and we've got our attorneys involved in trying to get their attention and get that corrected. It is occupied, and so it's not something that we can just go in and do ourselves because it's occupied. But everything within legal authority we have, we're taking steps to get it corrected, and we will. It just takes time.
Can you talk about the concrete on Royal Palm as well as?
Dumping of material on Royal Palm is very likely associated with the pipe replacement project we have there. That's one of the four pipes that you recently approved. And I don't know exactly where it is, but there will be construction material and construction activity there at Royal Palm where we're replacing that. If not, if that's not it, then we'll have to look at making sure it gets picked up soon.
As far as responsiveness to Mr. McDonald, I'm assuming Barbara is following up as calls are made or her department is?
We have many times in the past.
And thank you for your comments, Mr. Cotella, regarding the budget. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number One, which is the City Council Meeting Minutes, July 17, 2018, Business Meeting, July 17, 2018, Special Workshop Budget, July 31, 2018, Special Meeting Budget, July 31, 2018, Budget. I'll entertain a motion.
Move of approval.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Okay, we'll now move to Agenda Item Number Two, which is an ordinance on second reading. Mr. Reichman.
Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending Chapter 44 Traffic and Vehicles, Article II, Stopping, Standing, and Parking by adding a new section, 4437(c), and relettering existing subsection, 4437(c), to add an additional section to clarify parking prohibited in certain areas, to revise the amount of penalty, amending Article V, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Subdivision II, Civil Citation System, by adding a violation for handicap parking, and to provide for a penalty and civil citation for violating handicap parking. This ordinance provides for codification, conflicts, and severability and effective date.
Landen.
Mayor, City Council, this is the second reading of this ordinance. There's two goals. One is just to bring up our city code to standards with the state statutes that have been amended. And then, secondly, is to allow the sheriff to use our code to enforce the ordinance and not have to use state statutes. This is more efficient, and it becomes more of a parking ticket than a moving stop, if you will. So it's something the sheriff has requested, something that we've, you've received feedback from people who use the handicap parking spaces, and it's really intended to make it easier to enforce the handicap parking, to make sure the right people are using them.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or discussions before I open up to the public? Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make comment on Agenda Item Number Two? Please do so at this time. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council and entertain a motion.
Move of approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Three is an ordinance on first read. Mr. Reichman.
Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending Chapter 42 Streets, Roads, and Bridges and Other Public Places, Article II, Right-of-Way Utilization of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Coast. This ordinance amends Section 4246 Utility or Stormwater Crossings to require utility lines to be buried and maintained in a minimum depth of 24 inches. And it amends Section 4247 Construction Standards to require repair or damaged utility lines and reinstallment at the required minimum depth. It provides for severability, codification, conflicts, and provides for an effective date.
Landen.
Mayor, City Council, this is the first reading of this ordinance. This is directly related to our swell rehab program. What we find is, not electrical lines, but telecommunications are oftentimes buried right on the surface underneath the grass, and so when we regrade the swell in public right-of-way, we run into them. What we really need is for those utilities, at least in our swell area within our right-of-way, to bury them 24 inches, which is the standard that they should be, so that we don't hit them when we just do basic maintenance. And this ordinance basically, in essence, puts the utilities on notice that that's what they need to be doing, and it's local law. So we are recommending adopting this change in our ordinance to make them bury it 2 feet.
Counsel, any questions or discussion?
I have one question.
Yes.
Do we have a process in place for when another incident happens where we sever some type of cables to document it, to fight rebuttals by the telecoms to say, hey, it was dug 24 inches? Do we have a process in place to properly photograph it and go through the appropriate channels?
We, at this point, they're not required to be 24 inches, but oh yes, we have to contact that utility, and they take pictures, and insurance people get involved and the like. There is quite a little process we go through. But the fact of it is, the residents are the ones that are really the victims here, if you will. They're the ones that get their phone and cable and internet service cut for a couple of days as a result of this. So this is really protecting our residents too from that kind of inconvenience.
Thank you.
Question. Is there any means that the utilities could kick back against us for doing this ordinance?
I think if there is, it'd be a legal one, so I'll let the attorney address that.
We have the, these are in our rights-of-way, and we have the right to, when someone comes into our right-of-way, we have the legal right to place parameters and conditions on, when they come in and put something in our right-of-way. If it, this was unreasonable, or an unreasonable requirement, that'd be something else. But this is standard. When this language, when we worked with your staff to come up with this language, we went around and we found out what the construction standard was. And you'll see a lot of specific language in there, dealing with RJ-11, copper wire, fire balloon, coaxial DSL, and T1 lines. I can assure you, before I started working in this ordinance, I didn't know any of those terms. So, and we didn't make those up. So this is, this comes from the industry standard so that we can make sure that what we're requiring is reasonable.
To reiterate, then, 12-inch depth is something that, or 24-inch depth, sorry, is something that is done in other municipalities.
That is correct.
Any questions, counsel?
That's all my questions.
Okay. No other questions or comments. I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Three? Please do so at this time.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Neilbach, R section, a question on this right-of-way. Who's paying for this? Will the telephone companies be responsible, or whatever companies laying the wire, or will they be allowed to pass it on to consumer?
Thank you for comments. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Landen.
Well, whoever line it is that we call, and they've come out and repaired it, and sometimes they send the city a bill, sometimes they don't, and then it becomes an insurance claim, and then the insurance people reach an agreement somehow is how this usually works. So our insurance carriers are recommending this ordinance because it gives us better defense and say that you need to start maintaining your lines at a lower depth. Without this, there's nothing that says they have to do this. As far as who pays the cost, we all do. I mean, you know, this is, whether it's a city or a utility company, the consumer ultimately pays the cost for this type of damage.
And I also want to add, if you take a look at this, the added language in Section 4247, the 24 inches, well, it's not just in other law currents, but it's been in our code before. We've done, as we've added some language, so that it has to be, it removes the argument that we sometimes hear, well, we originally buried it, but somehow it's not, you know, it's not where we originally buried it. So now it says, not only does it have to be originally placed at 24 inches below grade, it's got to be maintained 24 inches below grade. So again, this is to make sure that.
Gives it teeth.
Pardon me?
Gives it teeth.
That's right. That's right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other counsel questions or discussion? If none, entertain a motion.
Move of approval on first reading. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Now move to Agenda Item Number Four, which is a resolution approving a subdivision plat of the Waterside Supercenter. Mr. Landen.
Mayor, City Council, this is a real simple two-lot plat. There's been a number of two-lot plats out in the area, so at this point, it takes formal City Council approval, but I just going to give you the details.
Good evening, mayor and council members. This is Application 3536. It's referred to as the Waterside Supercenter Plat. The location of this plat is in Hard Grove Grade Industrial Park, west of US 1, east of the railroad track. Again, this is a depiction on the aerial. It's 14.5 acres in total. It's vacant, but it will be the home of, the future home of Waterside Pools. The future land use is industrial, and of course, our industrial future land use is intended to provide employment opportunities and serve as our economic base. The zoning is industrial, and generally in Hard Grove, you find a mix of construction, warehousing, and business support uses. This is an image of the proposed plat. That concludes my comments. Staff is recommending adoption of Resolution 2018 approving the plat for the Waterside Supercenter.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Now I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Four? Please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move of approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Five is a resolution approve the final plat for Hidden Lakes Phase One, Section 2B, replat. Mr. Landen.
Mayor, City Council, this is another phase in the Hidden Lakes area. It's one of our fastest-growing residential areas, and they need more lots to build more homes, and Ida's going to give you the details.
So this is Application 3549. It's referred to as Hidden Lakes Phase One, Section 2B, replat. This is an aerial depiction of the section we're referring to. It's generally located east of Old Kings Road, north of the Lehigh Canal, south of Hidden Lakes Phase Two, and west of the Graham Swamp. The future land use of this phase is residential. The zoning is master plan development. It was originally approved in 2004 as a planned unit development under the old zoning code. The PUD establishes a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. The lots in this phase range from 7,100 square feet to 13,000 square feet plus. The infrastructure has been installed. This is a depiction of the northern portion of the plat. There's 59 lots in total in this phase. This is a depiction of the southern portion of the plat. Staff is recommending adoption of Resolution 2018 approving the final plat for Hidden Lakes Phase One, Section 2B, replat, authorizing the mayor to execute the plat, and staff to issue a final development order subject to the following condition, that the city obtain and accept approval of maintenance sure-to-your-bond prior to plat recording. Again, they're complete with their infrastructure, so it's just a matter of receiving the maintenance bond prior to plat recording.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Five? Please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move of approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Six is a resolution approving the purchase of an advanced metering infrastructure system from Census USA. Mr. Landen.
Mayor, City Council, you heard this presentation at your workshop last week. I thought it would be worthwhile to try to make sure the public could, had a chance to hear it again. It's, I think, very exciting. It's moving us into a different stage in technology for our utility, not cutting-edge. They've been around for probably a decade, but it's something we've been working towards and now ready to implement the actual fixed-base system. So Randy's going to give you the details.
Good evening, counsel. This is about the advanced metering infrastructure. Currently, the city has three types, three ways that it reads its meters. One is manually, where we visually read the information off the meter dial, and it's logged into a handheld computer. The second is by touch reading, where a meter technician uses a touch wand, touches the meter sensor, and the information is wirelessly downloaded to a handheld computer. And the third is what we term drive-by, where a laptop and a transceiver is put in a vehicle, and you drive down the road, and the information is gathered that way. As part of the 2018 Strategic Action Workshop recommendation, it was decided to upgrade the wireless metering to the next level through communications via the fiber hub and to provide real-time usage for monitoring. This project will be coordinated with Magellan Advisors to maximize the usage of the advanced metering infrastructure. And this is a performance measure to install transmitters to reduce the meter-reading time and improve efficiency. Funding for this project is in the capital improvement plan, utility capital improvement plan. This is a diagram of how the system would work. If you look at the upper left-hand corner, you can see the meter sending out the information to the base station. From there, that information is sent via the city fiber net to the city server, and from the server, it goes out onto the internet to the Census Data Center in Raleigh, North Carolina. This is, at that location, the information is processed and stored to be used by our customers, by the city itself, and of course, the finance department. If there was a problem with that data center in North Carolina, there is a backup data center in Boise, Idaho. This is a map of the city limits. We have icons with tab, name tabs on them, identifying the locations. If you look at the bottom of the screen, you'll see the existing tower we have at Water Treatment Plant Number Two. That would be our first base station installation. And then there's two options for either the tennis center and cigar lake option, and that, the final location will be determined by the radio frequency engineer for the optimal placement of the base station. Going up north, you'll see that the next location is a city-owned tower on Utility Drive, and then in the upper left-hand corner is the existing tower at Water Treatment Plant Number Three, and the final placement of the last base station would be on the city-owned water tower at A1A. This is a direct meter-to-receiver architecture. The FlexNet advanced metering infrastructure allows for direct data transmission from the meter to the receiver system without any additional processors or boosting. The system provides reliable data delivery while eliminating peripheral interference due to the licensed frequency. The FCC licensed frequency is dedicated to the City of Palm Coast. No other entity can use it, so there would be no shared bands with other devices. It provides 2 watts of 900 licensed megahertz power, and for security and redundancy, it meets the advanced encryption standard AES 256 for encryption, and a cyclic redundancy check CRC 32, error checking, and redundant messaging. The FlexNet system advantages are the consumer portal. One of the things that we want to do is provide easy access for our customers to current account information, plus they can set up alerts for leaks in high consumption. It also has reporting for leak detection and meter tampering, and this is also part of the city's desire to utilize technology to advance its agenda and to make us a more efficient system. And as part of that, it has a smart gateway interface device, which will interface with any third-party's units to where we can have, we can give us water pressure management, temperature and tank monitoring, water quality, and supervisory control and data acquisition. temperature and tank monitoring, water quality, and supervisory control and data acquisition, better known as SCADA. The Census proposal for the, is, in the first year initial outlay is two hundred thirty-six dollars, two hundred thirty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. This includes the annual cloud-based software service costs of forty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars, and that's based on the current number of meters in the system. This includes integration. This includes the RF engineering, the project management, training, and everything it will take to get the system in place and functioning. The second, and if we desire to do a third expansion, if we don't combine it in a second expansion, will be a total cost of a hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars. And any future annual cloud-based software services would be based upon the additional number of meters or endpoints added to the system. And staff is recommending that the city council approve the purchase of the Census FlexNet AMI system, and authorize the city manager and city attorney to negotiate the final terms of the contracts. Is there any questions?
That's the question. Will this, will this reduce costs of, of monitoring?
Yes. What it will do, councilman, is it will give us more information to help us make an informed decision quicker. Like for leaks, we will be able to help the customer, even if they don't set up a customer, consumer portal, and some customers don't want it, we can still are going to have leak detection on all our accounts, so that we can help the customers. It'll give us data to be able to look at when our high peaks are for usage and what areas. It will, that, the data and the information will help utility staff, especially in making planning for not only now, but in the future.
Other questions?
Awesome job on this AMI initiative. Pardon? Awesome job on this AMI initiative.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number six? Please do so at this time.
Mike Cochill, Palm Coast, again. Look, technology's great. One thing I would ask is, who asked for it? Have the citizens asked for it? Will they use it? You have an, sort of an aging population here. Do you think that most of Palm Coast will use all that data for that individual household to make those decisions? I doubt it. Second thing is, we talk efficiency. Well, where are the dollar figures on efficiency? Will though, will that efficiency, is it expressed in any kind of dollar savings that we can apply to current costs? I urge the council to table this until the term efficiency is reduced to dollars, so we know that the efficiency will actually have a cost reduction impact on the total investment. That is what you do in any project. To say that efficiency is measured and somebody can read the data better? No. What is the, the cost reduction in terms of labor, in terms of material, in terms of paperwork, in terms of time? What is the cost estimate? Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I was just wondering, would the application have the ability for a customer, if he saw that he was out of town and there was a high water usage, he could cut his water off through an application? Just curious.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Good evening, George Mayo, Palm Coast. The gentleman here said that there is security. It's our own system, our own bandwidth. Yet, I read all the time, there are utilities across the country, small cities, big towns, whose utilities have been hacked and shut down for hours until they, can be worked around by the utility itself. I guess he's assuring us this can't happen, but I'm not sure in today's hacking systems that that is possible. Also, that means to me that you have utility workers who go out and currently collect the data. Are they going to be laid off, or are they going to be found jobs elsewhere in the city? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Take it to the first speaker. On the efficiencies, we've spoken about several times. This approach, frankly, not losing jobs, but would create efficiencies internally and externally. Those have been identified as an approach and a strategy. We are currently not able to even determine if there are leaks, if there's higher consumption of utilities. Those are things that go into efficiencies outside of just the basic cost of the service.
Correct. Well stated.
Okay. And as far as the customer being able to understand when they're out of town, the high levels of usage, and if there is an issue?
They, they will not be able to turn their water off, but they will be able to contact us, and we can send a technician to turn the water off. So, that is a benefit, but no, that, they, you know, aren't going to be able to turn the water off at the meter, obviously remotely.
And, and as far as security goes, I mean, I, you know, I work for a technology firm. I can tell you, there had been significant advancements made in technology surrounding this type of device, as far as the data that's derived and where it's placed, particularly in the cloud.
Yes.
It's far safer than being on-premise in, in a server.
Once again, well stated. Yes.
Okay. Counsel, any further questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Move of approval. Second.
Moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number seven is a resolution approving a contract with Halifax Paving Incorporated and a work order with SAI for the Construction and Construction Engineering and Inspection Services of Seminole Woods State Road One Hundred Turn Lane Project. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, we have a number of infrastructure projects. As you know, that's a major priority for us right now. And although you've seen these and heard these presentations at your workshop, I think it's important to try to let the public know about some of the efforts we're making out there to make our streets safer and have traffic flow better. And so Alina has three presentations to try to do exactly that. She's going to start with this one.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. This presentation is to give you an overview of the improvements at the State Road One Hundred and Seminole Woods Boulevard intersection. Project details include a hundred twenty days construction schedule, out of which ninety days is for substantial completion, which means the turn lane should be open and available for use for the residents, and an additional thirty days to complete all of the construction, outstanding construction items. The project will add a dedicated left turn lane, crosswalks, signals, siding, and pavement markings. And the source of funding for this project is a FDOT Local Agency Program Agreement and Transportation Impact Fees. This slide gives you a visual of what the completed project will look like. You will see a dedicated left turn lane will be added in the place where the current median is, as well as the crosswalks along Seminole, across Seminole Woods Boulevard and State Road One Hundred. And the next step would be to approve the construction contract with Halifax Paving for the amount not to exceed two hundred fifty-four thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. The bids did come in slightly over budget, and the city submitted additional funding requests to the Transportation Planning Organization, which will be heard during their August twenty-second meeting. And the next step also, to approve a work order with the SAI for Construction Engineering Inspection Services, which is mandated by FDOT in an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty-two cents.
Counsel, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number seven? Please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move of approval.
Moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number eight is a resolution approving a work order with CPH Incorporated for Design Services for Improvements to Citation Boulevard. Mr. Landon.
This is another bridge and street path project that Alina's going to give you details on.
Again, this presentation is to give you an overview of the proposed improvements on Citation Parkway and Sesame Boulevard. This is the proposal for the design services. Initial conceptual plan was presented to council in January of two thousand and seventeen. Also, there's a bridge at the intersection of Citation Parkway and Seminole Boulevard, which has been deemed structurally deficient by the Florida Department of Transportation, and we have received a corrective action letter issued in June of two thousand and eighteen. Some of the proposed intersection improvements include the elimination of the T-intersection of the Citation Parkway and Sesame Boulevard, and there are no residential or addresses on Citation Parkway, so as a result, we would actually eliminate Citation Parkway and just extend Sesame Boulevard to Seminole Woods Boulevard. We would also realign the roadway and construct a new culvert, which will eliminate the existing FDOT bridge classification, add turn lanes on Seminole Woods Boulevard and Universal Trail Intersection. This will also give us room for an addition of a path along the south side of Citation Parkway, as we will take the four-lane road and reduce it down to the two-lane road. We will also provide access to the city property at Dry Lake, and the source of funding for this project is the Streets Improvement Fund. This slide gives you an overview of the proposed turn lanes, as you see at the intersection of Citation Parkway and Seminole Woods Boulevard, as well as a turn lane onto Universal Trail. The next step would be to approve the work order with CPH for the design services in an amount not to exceed two hundred thirty-six thousand and fifty-nine dollars. Out of that amount, a hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred forty-three is for the design services, and additional forty thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars for the environmental permitting and post-design services on a, as needed basis.
Counsel, any questions or discussion?
I have a question. The culvert, that says it won't be classified as a bridge anymore, does that mean that FDOT will not be inspecting?
Correct, yeah.
Ultimately, is that a safer option? Or more durable? I mean, is...
Yeah. What we'll be replacing it with will be a concrete box culvert, which has a longer lifespan. It, it doesn't meet the criteria as a bridge classification, but we'll be performing in-house inspections of that structure.
Other questions?
Any public comment on agenda item number eight? Please do so at this time. And I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion. Moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number nine is a resolution approving a work order with England, Timms, and Miller for design services related to the Whiteview Parkway Improvement Project. Mr. Landon.
This is the last of our Street Improvement Safety Program that Alina's going to give you details on.
Again, this is the presentation for the design services for the Whiteview Parkway corridor. This project falls under the Strategic Action Plan for enhancing safety measures throughout the community, and continuing to enhance safety improvements at intersection and along roadways. Current condition, there has been a crash analysis report issued by the Transportation Planning Organization, which lists the segment of Wood Aspen Lane and Rolling Sands Drive as the second highest crash road segment in Volusia and Flagler County. There has been several opportunities for public participation. Conceptual plan was presented to council in April of two thousand and seventeen. We held a neighborhood meeting in January of two thousand and eighteen, as well as presented the project to the Beautification and Environmental Advisory Committee in May of two thousand and eighteen. This shows you the project area, the corridor, which will be from Pritchard Drive all the way to the intersection of White Way Par, Whiteview Parkway and US One. Some of the project details, we have a nine-month proposed design and permitting schedule. It will include an additional twelve turn lanes, continuous street lighting, as well as the extension of multi-use paths from White Mill Drive to US One. And the source of funding for this project are, is the Transportation Impact Fees. On the next several slides, you will see proposed improvements. If you look on your screen on the left-hand side, you see the existing conditions, and then on the right-hand side is the image of the proposed improvements. So as you can see, the first one would be a left turn lane from Whiteview Parkway onto Princess Rose Drive. The second intersection would be on the Ravenwood Drive, and again, you will have dedicated left and right turn lanes from Whiteview Parkway onto Ravenwood Drive, as well as an addition of a right turn lane from Ravenwood Drive onto Whiteview Parkway. On Whipper Wall as well, you will have a dedicated right and left turn lanes from Whiteview Parkway into the residential area of Whipper Wall Drive. At White Mill, you will get a dedicated right turn lane from Whiteview Parkway, as well as a dedicated left turn lane from Whiteview Parkway onto White Mill Drive, as well as a right turn lane from White Mill Drive onto Whiteview Parkway. This is also where the current path stops, so this project will actually extend the path from this point on to US One. Next intersection is the Rolling Sands Drive, and you will get a dedicated right turn lane onto Woodbury Drive, left turn lane onto Rolling Sands Drive, as well as the right turn lane from Whiteview Parkway onto Rolling Sands. Currently, this intersection has three median breaks, and there has been several options for modification of this intersection, and this was selected based on the comments received at the neighborhood meeting. And then, the final intersection would be a right turn lane from Whiteview Parkway onto Wood Aspen Lane, as well as a merge, merge lane for residents turning from Wood Aspen Lane onto Whiteview Parkway. And this is just an overview slide of what the final project will look like. You will have a one-lane road, or actually, two-lane roads with a white view, with a multi-use path on the side of the road. Here you can see the proposed fees for the design services is broken into several segments, and the main purpose is to show you that alternate one is an allowance, as we will need, find, find out how much money we actually need once we get into design phase. Street lighting will include the segment from Pritchard Drive all the way to US One, as long as all of White Mill Drive. And there was forty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars included for landscape, hardscape, and irrigation services, which have been determined to be done in-house. The next step would be to approve the work order with England, Timms, and Miller for Whiteview Parkway improvements in an amount not to exceed five hundred seventy thousand and eighty dollars. Again, as previously mentioned, a portion of that is for the roadway multi-use path design services, as well as alternates one and two, which include lighting and subsurface excavations in an amount of seventy-one thousand, two hundred ninety dollars.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or discussion? Okay. I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number nine? Please do so at this time.
My name is Jack Howell, Palm Coast. I don't know if you had an opportunity to review my qualifications for speaking on this, but I am a graduate of the Traffic Institute at Northwestern University, which is the premier school in the country for accident reconstruction and investigation. I am certified as an expert witness in this area in the states of California, Louisiana, and North Carolina. Further, I taught accident investigation for the Jacksonville Sheriff's Office from two thousand and four to two thousand and eight. So I think I have a little knowledge on what is going on here. Personally, when I read the analysis that was presented by one of your staff members, who supportedly was a traffic engineer, I can tell you, that was not a traffic engineering study. And I know my studies. Now, there are a lot of things that were missing, and the study was flawed. For example, while we had a total of sixty accidents over three years, there was no mention of the road conditions, whether dry, whether it was wet, the time of day was missing, that these accidents took place. What was the driver? Was the driver under medication or under alcohol? What were the average speeds and the speeds of impact? What is the width of this highway? Is it ten feet or less, or more? What is the road pitch and the drainage? Where are their streetlights? And what about the... And what about the road markings? Now, my assessment of these accidents is basically you can't fix stupid. These accidents were driver-operated induced, and I think that you're going down a road that doesn't need to be strict from four to two. If anything, there should be four lanes all the way from Bel Air to US-1. Look at the left-hand turns, the number of left-hand turns at Bel Air. Look at the terms of the rear end hits at Bel Air and Whiteview Parkway. Now, I know you pretty well made up your mind because this project has moved on, so I'm not going to belabor it because I've watched you just pass all this stuff, but you're making a mistake. Trust me, there will be a repeal.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
John Brady, Palm Coast. In addition to what the Colonel said, I'd like to point out that you're going to be putting a sidewalk. Where's that sidewalk leading? To Route One? And what's going to happen then? There's no sidewalk on Route One. So you're making a sidewalk to disaster. Number one. Number two, what happens three years down the road when you've had a couple of accidents? Are you going to go and tear it up and make it back into four lanes? I don't think so. And the numbers quoted up here don't add up to $1.6 million. We're talking about a portion of the project here. I think it's very disingenuous to give the public a number which is lower than what we have stated at our previous council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Mr. Neil Bach, our section, Palm Coast. This project should be canceled. We studied, and the money would be used for other things. It is not going to do anything better to the traffic conditions. Yes, there's been accidents, and like the gentleman said, they're all driver-related. You cannot fix something that doesn't need fixing in the way that you're trying to fix it. I worked in law enforcement for 20 years. I've seen traffic studies, and this whole project just basically stinks. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close. Public comment. All the comments are put on the record. So any other questions or comments from our council members? None will entertain a motion.
Move of approval? Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Okay, we'll now move to the consent agenda. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, or 17? Please do so at this time.
John Brady, again. Number 14 and 15. I would like to see, any of you who have seen what a Wawa does, the number of people coming in and out of there is, will be fantastic. My concern is a car traveling westbound on Route 100. People are going to try and get out of that gas station and make a left-hand turn onto Route 100. Are you going to be requiring them to go on Bulldog Drive? And you will have a backup, believe me. This has to be more carefully studied by a traffic engineer because of the volume that will be going in there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close. Public comment. As far as the traffic engineer, it has been...
Right. Actually, you've got city traffic engineers and also FDOT because it is on State Road 100, and there will not be a left out of Wawa and onto State Road 100. It'd be strictly a right in and right out. To turn left and head eastbound on State Road 100, yes, you're going to have to exit onto Bulldog Drive and use a signal there at Bulldog and State Road 100. A lot of different configurations are happening to address this on Bulldog Drive. We're very aware of the traffic there, just like we saw at racetrack, and the improvements are happening with the project on Bulldog Drive.
Thank you. Okay. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda? Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Now, I'll open it up to public participation. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on items not on the agenda? Please do so at this time.
Mr. Neil Bach, again, our section. I'd like the council to advise what the status is on negotiations with the county commissioner, I guess it was, on the airport impact fee, tobacco, I guess you want to call it maybe? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
George Mayo, Palm Coast. Earlier, I asked if the public employees who do the water meters, the meter readers, were going to be laid off or found a job elsewhere in the city. I didn't believe. I heard a yes, no, there could still be employed or they're going to be laid off.
Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you. An update as far as the city-county negotiations?
We have presented a proposal to both the county and the developer, and they said they would evaluate and get back. Their representative has been in contact with staff, and our proposal will work on an annexation agreement that will address all the issues. Very positive.
Yes, thank you. And as far as layoffs, I think I indicated that no layoffs would occur. This does not take place of the actual staff that goes out and does the work right now.
Yeah, I know Richard would appreciate if I take this opportunity to, you know, kill the nomer that we have meter readers nowadays, because that's not what we have. The same people that may go out and read meters as part-time, they're also the ones that go out and do some fixing, the turnoffs, the turn-ons. They are, you might say plumbers in a lot of ways. So, no, we don't need to lay people off. We need to, we have like 200 orders for new meters that we're behind on. We need them put to work on that. So what it does is we'll avoid, with our growth, having to hire more staff quicker because they won't be spending time going around reading meters, which is, once again, kind of a misnomer.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion by city council matters not on the agenda. Councilmember Clufus.
I have nothing to add.
Councilmember Line.
Nothing.
Vice America?
Nothing for this meeting, Mayor.
I have nothing as well. Discussion by city attorney.
Why break up a good thing?
Go ahead.
Discussion by city...
I have good reason to break up a good thing. Couple of announcements. Probably the most important one is Friday of this week, the 10th, is the start of school. We already have some message boards out there trying to, you know, once again, ask motorists to be very careful around our schools and where the kids are walking to and from school. Very, very important, and particularly the first few weeks when everybody's new to the traffic patterns and everything. So just a little heads up to be careful. Secondly, is this Thursday, FDOT is holding a public information meeting about the proposed roundabout at US-1 in Matanzas that they're proposing. They are attempting to help inform the public, educate the public about what the proposal really is and the benefits of the proposal there at that intersection. It is a state project. It's not a city project. It is going to be held at the Palm Coast Community Center this Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00. It's kind of an open house format that people can kind of come and go and learn about what the project's all about. So anybody that's curious about would welcome them to be there, to attend. And then, once again, a lot of Parks and Rec activities they keep promoting, probably the one that is coming up that people can prepare for first part of September, the Senior Games, very, very popular, and that is coming up here in September. Also, the intercoastal waterway cleanup, September 8th, very, very popular, a lot of groups, a lot of fun. So anybody interested in that, put that on your calendar, and then just stay tuned to our website, in particular, the Parks and Rec with movies in the park and Food Truck Tuesday and all the good stuff around the community.
Is there a movie this Friday?
The movie is, yes, it is. It's Friday, 8:30, Beauty and the Beast, here at Central Park. So, Mayor, that's all I have.
Live-action or the classic animal? Sorry. Oh, okay.
Okay. Vice...
On that note, I move we adjourn.